Welcome to the May and a Half 2018 meeting. Roll call, please start.
Anthony Maranti.
Here.
Kim Connor.
Here.
Dennis Daggett.
Here.
David Hardy.
Here.
Peter Lewis.
Here.
Neil Tonan.
Here.
Neil Zuckerman.
Here.
Thank you. Minutes. Approval of minutes from the April meeting? Any additions, deletions, corrections? Move to adopt minutes, the April meeting? Second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
First order of business, return of escrow. Martin McHugh, 200 Lake Shore Price Road. Tara and Ron, are we aware of any?
We have no outstanding questions.
Okay.
I can just include it subject to my concern.
Okay. Move to adopt with the conditions that Steve's put on?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Significant shift in the agendas, you might expect it. The last item on the agenda is Hudson Highlands Reserve. And I'd like to get the things necessary to get to move this out of the way for the time We got that memo from AKRF spelling out the things that we -- one we thought we had done was a positive deck, but we need to also adopt the final EAF. So Chris, I'm going to turn off AKRF and just explain what we're doing right now.
Hi all, Chris Robbins, AKRF. Tonight, we all know that at the last meeting, the planning board voted to issue a pos deck on the Hudson's Reserve project. Subsequent to that, we've generated a formal pos deck for the board to consider. That's in your package. There's an EAF Part III revised that had been prepared prior, but we revised it now that there's a pos deck issued for your consideration. That's the determination of significance part of the Part III. That's also in your package. The way forward tonight would be to vote on the pos deck, if you will, the formal pos deck, and also the resolution that's in your package. So that would be the first step of this process, take care of the EAF Part III.
The resolution, adopt the pos deck, adopt the resolution.
Right. So you have to look at the EAF Part III, the pos deck itself, and then the resolution, which would allow you to adopt all of those documents to move forward.
One vote.
Okay, one vote for that?
One vote for all the issues.
Correct.
Following the resolution.
Okay.
So the resolution outlines all of the issues in your pos deck and the EAF Part III, determination of significance.
Okay. Steve, any comments?
Yeah, I agree with what Chris has said. I apologize for interrupting him. I just wanted to make it clear on that. At last meeting, the board decided that it wished to adopt a positive declaration.
Right.
A positive declaration, however, is a document which outlines your reasons for adopting a positive declaration, requiring an EIS. So what you did in effect was direct that a positive declaration, i.e. this document, be prepared for you to vote on it.
Okay.
And it has to be sent, or at least a notice of it, to the environmental bulletin.
Environmental news bulletin.
News bulletin, there you go, the ENB, which has been done, and you have to notice your scoping session, which has also been -- we've taken the liberty of noticing it for the later meeting in June, on the 21st. If the board is unhappy with that, that's fine, just open it and adjourn it further if that's what needs to be done. But we believe that based on the documents you have, this in the draft scope, which we'll talk about in a second, you'll be ready for your scoping session in June. So the first thing to do tonight, if it's the board's pleasure, is just to vote to adopt this resolution approving the Part III EAF. Part III EAF as revised says that you're adopting a pos deck on this, and which you've got a copy of the Part III EAF, and adopting the positive declaration. Once you've accomplished that, it's time to, again, if it's the board's pleasure, move on to start considering the draft scope. Now, the way that scoping works, and AKRF can elaborate on this if Chris is so inclined, is that, well, either the applicant can provide a draft scope, or you can provide a draft scope as a starting point, and you're going to look over the draft scope, and you're going to decide if it covers all of the items that you want to have considered in the EIS that's going to be prepared. Draft scope is just a starting point. You're going to hold a scoping session later on in June, and people are going to come in, and the board may comment, and say, "Well, gee, I think that issue's already been covered. I don't think that needs to be in the scope." Or perhaps they'll say, "Well, there's this other issue which is really of environmental concern that should be looked at in the scope." And then this board will make this document its own. Would that be the 21st? That'd be the next meeting, because we need to consider the -- that would be in July. So we need to consider all the comments and comment on whether the scope is complete or not. So it's a July meeting, you'll vote to adopt what would be your final draft scope, and that will be the outline, the blueprint, if you will, for what's going to be considered in the EIS. But for tonight, just take a look at it, and you'll, by voice vote, adopt a resolution setting the scoping session for the 21st formally.
So the three items to be done in the single vote are the items one, two, and three on the memo from AKRF, is that correct? And then voting on the draft scope, the DEIS would be a separate vote?
Well, you're --
To accept it?
No.
To?
You're going to vote, if you're so inclined, to hold the scoping session on the 21st.
Right.
Okay? And this will be the draft scope when you make that vote that we will be working off.
Okay. So what is the method by which we adjust that document that you just held up, this document?
What's going to happen?
In the scoping session itself?
No.
Okay?
The scoping session will be to accept the comments and make a record as to what -- I mean, you're free to do it at the end of the scoping session, close the scoping session, you can vote right then and there if you want, we just wouldn't recommend that you do that. What we recommend instead is that you hold off on adopting your final scope until you get memos from your consultants, ourselves and Ron, and AKRF, of course, and kind of digest the comments that you receive from the public and you'll receive from us, and you could draft up yourselves if you're so inclined, any proposed changes to the draft scope, additions, deletions, changes where everything's appropriate. For consideration, at the next planning board meeting, you'll have that draft document in front of you, at least as much as possible. There may be some last minute additions if the board has other ideas, at that July meeting, and at that time, you will vote to, again, if it's your pleasure, to adopt the final scope. Now, there's a 60-day clock on these things. If you do not approve your final scope within the 60 days, then the applicant is free to proceed with the EIS using a scope of their own devising. That's usually not a very productive way to go, so I would expect they give you an extension in the --
What, start?
When the filing of the EAF, the pos deck.
Sixty days from tonight.
So I haven't seen any of these documents.
They're not in my packet.
They were emailed out Friday after, by their firm.
These were for -- I haven't seen them. The draft --
Well, there you go. This one for --
Am I the only one?
I read it, but it's -- but when you have a majority of the board having not seen it, that means we have a problem.
Well, according to our secretary, it was emailed to everyone, so.
Right.
To the town.
Town email, came to town email.
Yep, to the town email.
Okay, so.
I was having some problems with the town email. I think part of the Google Power and the Optimum stuff going by.
Friday, okay. Friday at 7:00 at night, so.
Yeah, I had -- well, I lived, you know, I lived on the town. I did look at all the town emails and stuff, and I didn't see it, but I don't know. I could have just missed it, but I don't think so.
How's the board feel on that? Passing a resolution. Neil?
So two comments. One, I think two of these documents are fairly perfunctory. The resolution adopting a positive declaration is just me the leaves and says virtually nothing about the actual application. And I'd say the same thing is appropriate for the Part III. It literally just has a check mark, the later two, you will -- I would say, however, this third Part III, I'm not sure what number they are, but the one that's called State Environmental Quality Review Positive Declaration Notice of Intent, etc. I have noticed that there are a number of things in the section called Reasons Supporting This Determination that were mentioned in the meeting that we voted on that are not included. And so if this group would like to ensure that this document reflects, as this is a filing, I believe, the sum total of our conversation, I have some feedback on that. And whether this group feels like they would like to read this first, you only have a couple of options. Option one is we take a break and everyone reads it, or B, we do it at the next meeting. So I'm happy to provide my feedback, but I obviously want my colleagues to feel like they've read it.
Well, I'm not going to be at the next meeting. So you have to buy out a comment.
None of them.
So the essence of the board is they feel they cannot vote on this tonight? Anyone?
I can, because I've read it, but that's one person.
I don't have a problem. It looks like it's a quick read. I wouldn't have a problem reading it just to get a feel for it.
Neil, come on.
So, yeah, go, take 10 minutes and talk amongst ourselves about this.
Just to get things moving on. I mean, I --
Okay. Any additional comments from the board? Having studied in depth material we were given? I guess we should entertain a motion to adopt these three issues.
Unless there's something you guys want to add. Whatever you want to do it.
Steve?
Unless there's something you guys want to add.
Yeah, I'd like to -- so who is the author? Who should I point comments to? Who's the author of this document?
You can let us know.
Okay. Well, I know there are changes, but I think they are omissions from the conversation we had last time. I notice, and again, there may be an intention for you writing it in this style, which is very neutral, I guess is the word I'd use. A few things that were mentioned last time that I don't see here. You mentioned stormwater runoff and erosion. You don't mention the impact of encircling the pond with homes. You mentioned leaching of waste, but you don't mention the leaching of antibiotics and pesticides. You mention the equestrian center. You did not mention that, were mentioned multiple times, about the size of the facility. I think one word was used was gargantuan. Others called it industrial in size. So not mentioning the size of the facility. And I see no mention of quote-unquote "community character," which I believe is chapter, section 17, and the uniform structure of the layout of the homes. You mention aesthetics, which may be your attempt at a euphemism or a alternate word for the community character, but I believe that's the exact phrase from the EAF Part II used, and that's not cited here. And that's not cited here. So those are my observations.
Anyone else? Entertain a motion to adopt the final EAF Part III, the draft positive deck, and the resolution adopting the positive deck. Anyone?
I'm sorry, I should have commented before.
Oh, sorry.
So I agree with those things. If we wanted them in this document -- oh, sorry, I'm sorry. You know, is there a reason they're not in here?
The document itself is based on comments that we heard last time and the record. We can add those -- we can add your comments to this pos deck. This pos deck is your pos deck. So the comments that we're receiving now, we can fold into the pos deck, and that, you can adopt it with those comments. We'll make those revisions, and then this pos deck, along with the resolution, gets distributed to the interested involved agencies and anybody else who asked for a copy. So we can do that. You can accept the, you know, the document with the changes that were noted. We can make those revisions, submit it back to you for final review, and then that package can be submitted with the pos deck, the resolution for the pos deck, if you choose to accept that tonight.
If I could just, I understand what Chris is saying, and he's trying to accommodate the board's concerns, but you need to understand that a positive declaration's purpose is not to criticize the project or to deal in detail with everything that you think may present an issue. The point of the positive declaration is to explain the areas of potential significant adverse environmental impact which you feel have not been adequately addressed in the EAF and the existing EAF Part III that require an EIS to be prepared. So you list down general areas that have not been, with some explanation as to why they're significant, as to, you know, why you need an EIS. And the first one that's listed, it's actually under item number two, is surface water and groundwater. And it does reference the structures, access, roads, and residential lots as being potentially impactful on surface area and groundwater, which is admittedly a more general way, more neutral, I think is the term you used, way of covering the issue that you wanted, but I can assure you that everything that you've discussed is touched upon in these points. Now, if you'd like to --
I would push back, though, gently, which is the community character and the uniform nature is not at all listed.
That, well, it does mention that under aesthetics, but what I was --
No, it doesn't. It says -- that's not what it says. It says the proposed action would introduce new hillside development with the potential aesthetic impacts from sensitive viewpoints. It's not what it says.
Okay. Well, my point was that I think if the board acts tonight, you can adopt a resolution to approve the positive declaration with the inclusion of, and I think we can list at least two items, the aesthetics and the configuration of the houses and the size of the -- three items, and the equestrian center. And if we just carrot those in, you can actually take action tonight. We can go forward with the scoping session later on this month. If you want, you can put it over. It's the board's prerogative. I'm just saying, pos deck isn't that key an issue here. What's important is that you adopt it and that it identifies the reasons, provides a reason elaboration as to why you're issuing a pos deck. It doesn't need to be an all-inclusive document, but I mean, it's up to you. If you want to put it off, put it off, but I think you can adopt it tonight with just the proviso that those three areas be mentioned in a revised version to be prepared.
These items can be rolled in post-adoption?
Well, they -- it would be subject to the redraft, you know, just the inclusion of those three items. I mean, it's not going to be a substantive change. You're not adding new reasons or anything like that. You're just elaborating what's here. If there's something besides those three items, but if you're not comfortable with that, put it off till later this month.
Kim?
You know, my concern is, the reason we ask about these things repeatedly is because we want to make sure that we don't miss the opportunity to talk about them, right? You know, because we keep getting told that once we make a decision, we can't talk about stuff. So, you know, that's the whole point of the pos deck, was that there was more that we were concerned about, and that if we, you know, gave an egg deck, we wouldn't be able to do that. So we're just being, you know, I think, extra careful to make sure that the things that we're concerned about, that we're allowed to address those things.
How do you feel?
Maybe an alternative approach. There are three components to this. This is one of them, and my other two copies seem to have disappeared in the collection of paper. One was the Part III that was adjusted, and one was the whereas, whereas, whereas document, the resolution. So I would suggest, Mr. Chair, that possibly an alternative as we adopt the -- thank you, ma'am. We do vote on these two documents right now. But I'm just, I don't know if anyone has any challenge. These seem very, again, perfunctory, so I have no problem on these two. I would --
You're talking about the EAF Part III and pos deck?
Yes, and the resolution. I would, though, however, suggest to you, I agree with Kim, that the nature of the language, and we are, as we've been saying many times, we're trying to be very careful and very specific about how we feel and what we're observing and what our opinions are. I would like to see the language first on the edited version of this before I vote on it, at least.
Well, all I can say to you on that, Neil, is that this positive, this resolution, the resolution adopts these two documents. So if you adopt this, you're adopting these two.
Yeah.
But I mean, it comes down to either you want to adopt it with instructions to AKRF to make changes, or you don't want to adopt it tonight, and you want to put it off until your next meeting. And those are basically your two choices.
And something else I'd like to point out, and you raise a good point, right? The fact that as you go through this process, you have to be mindful of the fact that there are going to be gateways or hurls as you cross that you can no longer go back. The pos deck is not one of those, at least in our opinion. The document that you're really going to be concerned with moving forward, and the one that you need to make sure captures all of the issues that you are ultimately concerned with, and those that you want the applicant to review, is the scope. That's going to be the document that drives the rest of the environmental review for this project. So that scope is your outline. It identifies all of the issues that the planning board is concerned with with regard to this project, and that scope will be used by the applicant to develop their environmental impact statement, in that you will have then the opportunity to review all of the materials that they then provide for you to review. So the scope, in my opinion, the scope is the document. That is the key piece to this next step. And that's just, you know, information for the board. You decide what it is you need to do on that.
So just to go over the process again. So this, let's say we vote on all this and we say yes. The next meeting would be determining the draft scope?
So what would happen after, if you decided to adopt the pos deck and adopt the resolution for the pos deck and the EAF Part III, you then look at the scope and determine whether or not that scope is sufficient to use as a draft to solicit comments from the public at the next meeting and from the interested involved agencies who are going to have, who are going to receive this package along with that scope. So what would happen after this meeting, if you move forward with this scope, saying it's efficient to initiate that process of comment? That scope would be distributed. We'd go to, the planning board would go to the next meeting. At that next meeting, you'd have your public or your scoping session, you have your public input, you'd receive written comments, if they decide to write them, from your interested involved agencies. At that meeting, you can close that scoping session, you can decide to leave it open for a couple more days to receive additional comment. And then after that point, after you receive all the comments, those comments are compiled, we, and it's either done by AKRF or the applicant, you take that information, and that then feeds into and informs your revised scope, which becomes the final scope, and that is what you vote on at the July meeting. Did that answer your question?
So between now and the next meeting, we're going to get comments?
You may get some comments, you may not.
I mean, I'm just, so, because we have to vote on it by July or else our time runs out, correct?
I think you have a little bit more time than July.
It's pretty much July.
It's 60 days from today. So it's June 5th. You probably have until close to the beginning of August. You would not have another regularly scheduled meeting in that timeframe. So we were looking at the July 19th meeting to close that out. I think you could talk to the applicant about whether or not they'd be willing to give a --
That doesn't preclude advertising and having an additional meeting. Not that we really want to, but.
No, you could, of course, hold a special meeting if you were so inclined. If there was an issue and you were close to agreement with the applicant on a scope, I would expect that they would extend the 60 days for a reasonable period after that, perhaps one more meeting or something along those lines, rather than running out and starting their EIS. But I mean, you have some time, and you'd really like to have this done in July, if at all possible. So, you know, just to go back to Kim's question, you need a starting point for a draft scope. What the applicant has submitted, in our opinion, AKRF's, I haven't heard from Ron, but I would expect he agrees, otherwise we would have heard from Ron, because he lets you know if he doesn't agree, is a pretty good starting point. It looks fairly comprehensive. It touches on most of the issues that we've discussed. AKRF and I have discussed some potential comments in regard to some minor things we'd like to see added to it. But if you find this to be an acceptable starting point, and we're telling you it is, let this be the draft to start out with. Just the draft, just the starting point, okay? People can look at it and comment on it and say, you know, I mean, it's not perfunctory. It doesn't skirt the issues you've been talking about. This would be a good place to start. And then you will hear from us. Once you put it out there as the draft scope, people can look at it, we'll put it online, we'll file it with the clerk, you may get some comments before the scoping session. Sometimes that happens. People come in, they send stuff. Certainly you'll hear from your consultants. But it's at the scoping session that you can expect to receive most of your comments from the public. And of course, you'll all have a chance to look at it as well, I mean, in greater depth, and decide, gee, there's something, as, you know, as Neil pointed out, I'd like to see in there, or, you know, as I said before, maybe there's something you feel's already been covered, whatever. All that will be discussed at the scoping session in the next meeting, assuming that we go forward with it. And then after that, you'll wait again to get comments from your consultants to mull over everything you've heard, and at that July meeting, you'll decide, and you'll have, you know, based on the comments, a revised draft of it, if you say, hey, I want this in, or, you know, your consultants say, gee, here's a red line with things we think should be in. And you'll decide in July on your final scope. That's the plan, anyway.
Okay. Any further comment, Neil?
Sorry to make you go over it so many times.
No, that's all right. It's new for everybody here. All right. Do we have a motion on a resolution? Final EAF, draft pos deck, and the draft resolution adopting a pos deck? Anyone?
With the proviso that it is subject to seeing the edits that AKRF makes to said document.
Well, I think what you mean is subject to AKRF making the edits regarding the houses around the pond, the equestrian center, and community character as outlined by the board. And if you take a look at it and you say that's wrong, then obviously there have to be further changes, but assuming they incorporate those three things you've said, that will be the pos deck.
Yeah. Okay. Motion?
So moved.
Second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. So one other thing, go ahead, Steve.
I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt. Please.
The, we had talked a little earlier about the June regularly scheduled meeting, this board getting together a half hour or so earlier to begin this process. There's nothing else that is at least instructional for the board. You can see how this is new to everybody here. So do we need a motion on that to start the meeting?
Well, as the chairman, technically, you could call the meeting, but I think just as a --
All right.
We vote on those.
Entertain a motion to start the June regularly scheduled meeting at least a half hour early.
I'll second that.
All in favor? Aye.
I'm not here either. I said this last time. It sounds like you're not here either. We'll have a quorum still, but just want to let you know you have --
With copious notes. Okay, thank you.
New York State allowed dialing in. I would happily dial in, but the sunshine laws don't allow.
Two other things, as we've mentioned earlier. One, there should be a voice vote formally scheduling the scoping session for the June 21st meeting.
Okay. Motion to that effect?
I'll make that motion.
Second?
I'll second it.
All in favor? Aye. Thank you.
Second, there should be a voice vote formally adopting the draft scoping documents submitted by the applicant as the draft scope.
Okay. Motion to that effect?
So moved.
Second?
I'll second.
All in favor? Aye. Thank you.
So I wasn't -- Eye on that one, because I have some initial comments to make on this that I think are absent, similar to the ones I gave to AKRF earlier.
Do you want to see them in the draft scope?
Well, there's a couple of things, there are a couple of things that were materially discussed that are missing from this document as well. So why I didn't, I, that's fine. That's fine. We want to --
So you can make a motion to amend to include it.
Fine. I'd like to make a motion to amend the, to include the following comments.
Three items?
The items are, one, the size of the equestrian facility and the number of horses. Two, the community character and the spread of homes, the uniform nature of the homes. Two, the community character and the spread of homes, the uniform nature of the homes. Neither of those topics are included in this.
Okay, you're offering that amendment?
Yeah, I am, because they are material things we've raised that are absent from the document.
I'll second that.
Motion?
I'll second that.
Any further comment? Call for a vote? Oh, in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
So back with those conclusions, that'll be the draft scope.
And Neil, can you run through those one more time so we make sure we have-
Here, I'm just giving, let me give this to you, sir. These are my remarks from last meeting.
I got that. Pain taking-
One last thing, you know, and I don't know who we spoke with about this prior. Notification for the scoping session has been sent to the Environmental Notice Bulletin, E and B. That will be released tomorrow, so that meets the fourteen day pre-meeting notification. That will come out tomorrow. And Tara took care of the notification in the, in the paper of record, so that will also be out in time to allow for the fourteen day notification. So your notice for that meeting as well.
Okay.
Thank you. That's what I was, I just wanted to confirm that that's been done. Thank you very much.
Any further issues on this? Steve, Chris?
Well, we have to obviously get the revised draft scope done, and we'll touch base with the applicant on that to make sure we're on the same page. But I'd like to get that done and filed with the town clerk and posted as soon as possible, definitely this week. But that aside, I think we're pretty much ready for next week's meeting. We'll have that workshop to begin-
Yeah, seven o'clock.
Earlier. And I guess Kim and Neil are the only two-
Neil won't be there.
Okay.
Okay, I just want to get this out the door. That's why I brought it up from the end of the agenda. Okay, thank you. Thank you. Aaron, thanks. All right, we're going to get back to the regular, regularly scheduled programming. Item two on the agenda. Everybody ready to go? Give you a moment. Do you have an additional? Okay. Yeah, right. Thank you. Okay. Okay, thank you. All right, what was the second item on the agenda? Dunright Construction, Bob Ashley 3 Ethan Drive Garrison. Applicant is seeking approval of access to the property with the intent to construct a new single-family residence in the same location as the demolished home. Sorry, name-
Mr. Chairman and members of the board, Joel Greenberg, the architect for the project. If you recall, a few weeks ago, maybe before the storm, we met to, at a work session up at town hall to discuss the project. In the interim, Ron Gaynor's been out to the property and he generated a memo, which I have a copy of. And basically, we're here just to get access to the property because, as you know, Ethan Drive is not a town road. It's a private road. So we're here for access to the property. The good news is that we're basically the first property off Allen Drive, so our access from Allen Drive to our driveway is probably less than a hundred feet. The second thing is, I emailed to Ron a picture of the road as it intersects with Allen Drive, and also I sent him a copy of one of the gentlemen who lives on that road. I think there are, how many houses altogether?
Thirteen.
About thirteen houses. We're the first, will be the first, that's. But there are about thirteen houses, and there's one gentleman who takes it upon himself to maintain the road, to plow the road, and to keep it in good shape. So I think that's good in our favor. So basically, if you look at Ron's criteria for approval, I think we come under, under Section A, which says approval for the planning board is satisfied in its discretion that access to the parcel for which the permit is sought will provide safe and convenient access to such traffic, including but not limited to fire apparatus, cars, service vehicles, as may be necessary to access the parcel. So I believe that, again, here's a copy of the survey over here. Allen Drive is actually just about over here, so where the, I said we're probably less than a hundred feet to this driveway, and the other thirteen houses are along.
Excuse me?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Did you grab the mic or?
What's that? Yeah, okay.
Pull it out or?
Oh, I can, okay. Yep. And the other thirteen houses go along Ethan Drive, past the parcel that we're talking about. So if you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
So, you said there's a house there already that's being demolished?
No, no. The house, there was a house that was demolished several years ago, and now we're building it back on the same foundation.
So why isn't there access already? Why do you, to that parcel?
Ask the town officials. We went to the, well, actually, I'll, let me go back a little bit of history, a little bit of history. We applied to the building inspector. We got our health department approval some time ago, and we applied to get a building permit, almost to the point we were that close to getting a building permit, and then the building inspector says, oh, wait a minute, that's a private road. You've got to get access approval from the planning board. Here we are. Remember, yeah, your point is well taken. Since there was a house there already, do we actually need this?
Well, isn't the point that there's more than eight homes on it now?
Yes, the total is more than eight, correct. But the question that Kim just brought up, since there was already a house on there, I'm just asking.
Few issues to speak to. First issue was when there is an existing structure that's destroyed for whatever reason, the applicant has a year to pull a building permit. If he does it within the statutory period, he just deals with the building department. It's been, it's been an extended period, so that when they did apply recently to the building department, he recognized that it's, it falls under the issue that it requires access approval from the planning board. And you have a memorandum from my office that goes back to the middle of May, was intended to be the prior meeting, to just paint that picture, so what code requires and what the application has entailed to date. So they filed the necessary application. They filed an EAF form, actually because of the intervening period to get to tonight's meeting. There's always, also been a referral made to county planning, since it's adjacent to the Worcester County line. So those things have been resolved, and-
Have you heard from the county planning board yet?
I don't, I don't think we have. I have not seen the comments yet. And then just to assist the board, typically you might wish to have a site inspection to evaluate things. You also occasionally make referral to the fire department jurisdiction of record. This driveway is less than a 200 feet from Allen Drive, which is a town road. And so for that reason, today I took photographs and I did send them around electronically to give you some illustration that the existing condition from the intersection end, it's a gravel road, but I'm relatively certain that the fire department will have no issues with respect to attempting to service any, any condition that they'd have to respond to, to the first, to the first driveway.
What you're saying, it has the width and the-
It's a narrow road, but it's very, it's probably ten or twelve feet wide at its worst. It widens up to, you know, fourteen to eighteen feet wide. There's areas, as you travel down the roadway, that seem to be soft and could use improved drainage, but it's well beyond this property. And having dealt with the Continental Village Fire Department now for two or three of these applications of late, I'm fairly certain that the chief would not have any issues to, that he would require improvements to the initial section of this roadway. Now, you can still do what you wish. I'm just offering my opinion, and that's the reason I gave you some photographs. But they're, they're here just to get access approval. It's not, there's no formal site plan required, because it's, it's less than a thousand square feet in the home. So you're here just to establish whether they have safe and appropriate access to their driveway.
So those other documents, if I have any questions about them, I can't really ask them, because that's not our purview.
You could ask anything you wish. It may be a matter that is resolved at the building permit phase. You're here to establish what's reasonable and appropriate access prior to the building department, considering a building permit.
So we're back at this thirteen houses on a private road, more than eight houses on a private road, which I'm never really clear about how that works.
Well, thirteen has nothing to do with it.
No, no, it's more than-
Over eight.
Over eight.
Okay, yeah, well, I forget the year. Fifty's, is it, Ron? But you got to go back a ways before you can actually have eight houses on a private road as of right, and just get them without going for ODA approval. After, again, off the top of my head, I'm going to say the seventies?
Yeah, because the eight building lots go back to roads predating nineteen sixty.
I said the fifty's.
And then four building lots relate to roads predating nineteen eighty.
Okay. So, prior to sixty, you can have more than eight. After that, you can only have four, as of right. If you want to put more than four on, that's fine, but you have to show that the road provides safe and suitable access for emergency vehicles. You don't have to build it up to town road standards, but you have to at least have safe and suitable access for emergency vehicles, and that's what people come to you for. They say, are my slopes too steep? Are my road too narrow? You know, is my drainage okay? So the question here is, unfortunately, because they lost their rested rights, is Ethan Drive, does it provide safe and suitable access?
Well, based on what Mr. Gaynor just said, and our inspection of the road, and the fact that we're the, we'll be the first house, well, there was a house, it'll be back to being the first house on the road. Mr. Gaynor seems to feel that emergency vehicles, et cetera, will be able to access that house without any problem. And again, as per his second page here, under A, approval of planning board, we, I think we've satisfied those conditions, so we would ask for approval.
I have one more question.
Sure.
Maybe two questions. It says in your form here, your EAF form, I think it's the EAF, that it's, that it's in an architectural, or an archaeologically sensitive area.
Okay, let me explain that. So, when you, when you do a short EAF, and you punch into the, you do it on the computer, and you punch in the area that it's located in, certain questions they automatically answer. And that's one of them.
Do we know what that is?
I have no idea. I mean, they're-
Yeah, that whole southern area of town is in a significant-
Because of Continental Village.
Significant area. It's just, it's a very broad area that's identified in the D C mapper. And as is indicated by the applicant, as soon as you initiate the filing, or the preparation of the EIS through their agency, they prerespond to those questions. And so it comes right out of their mapper. There's nothing unique to this specific parcel that warrants that.
And that system would have pointed that out.
Correct.
Right.
Did you have a follow-up?
My last question is, why is it a two-bedroom? Is there a particular reason to that?
Very simple, because the house that was there previously was a two-bedroom, and the records show from both the town and from the health department, that the most you can get on that, or the most, the most you can get on that house, on that septic system is two-bedroom, so that's why it's going to be two-bedroom.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Neil?
I have a question. I just want to make sure, we're looking at granting approval for access specifically for 3 Ethan Drive, not looking at anything down that road?
Correct.
That this is safe access specifically for that. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Neil?
I'm inclined to support this, because it's a pre-existing home. I feel like there's an unfair change of behavior, given that the location is unchanged. However, I would ask that, Ron, with all due respect, the notion of safe access seems to be, while you're clearly qualified in many regards, I suspect that seems like a very narrow requirement of the emergency departments that service it. So it would seem like this is, the opinion would be most relevant from the fire department to weigh in on whether Ethan Drive, even for this hundred feet, is appropriate. I have no idea if it's whiffing conditions are established, and I would love to, we often refer, in fact, I think we always refer to fire department for these kind of matters.
That's one of the requirements, preliminary necessary referral.
That's right. Now, so I don't want to delay this gentleman any further. If we think it's clearly safe and no problem, but if you, again, I haven't seen the property or the road, if we think it's a, you know, within spitting distance one way or the other, then fine, but if we think maybe it's worthy of having a conversation similar to the, we're going to have a discussion a little bit from now on, Eiler, I don't know how it's pronounced, but however it's pronounced. Peck Eiler, we had a whole discussion, photos about whether the whiff is appropriate, and so I think if you determine, if you think there's value in having the fire department opine, I'd like to do that.
And if the board wishes to make that referral, they can, or potentially could they adopt access approval condition of unsatisfactory response from the fire department?
The, ODA approval is technically a special permit. I know it's not listed as that in the code, but that's what it is. So it has to be referred to county planning if you're within however many feet from a state or county road. I think that's been referred in this case already, right? But I don't think we've heard from county planning. So you can't vote until you hear from county planning, anyway.
Or unless thirty days has passed.
Or unless thirty days has passed, that's true.
Certainly not.
Has it been referred to the fire company?
No, it hasn't. Again, we had just prepared these documents prior to the May fifteenth meeting.
It may not hurt then in parallel to ask the fire department, because if they, if they can be faster than county planning, then you will have the answer, anyway.
I think they would be. The only question I had is-
Just a question, how long since we, and since you referred it to county planning board?
I can tell you, it was something prior to May fifteenth. It's only the fifth.
Less than thirty days.
So, it's less than thirty.
The only question I have, and it may be facetious, when it was the third house or the fifth house, or the fifteenth, thirteenth house, we're talking about the road-
I can tell you, at that point, I've driven the entire road.
Okay.
And once you get deeper into the, into Ethan Drive, there's drainage issues.
Okay.
There's roadway issues where you'd want to see improvements.
So this house-
I'm responding only to the issue where this-
Yeah, where this house is located, correct. Okay.
It's immediately behind a developed house that fronts on Hamlet.
Okay.
But I have no problem making referral on behalf of the board, the fire department, and I think we can get a pretty rapid response.
I trust you, Ron, obviously. I just, we've done it with, to the fire company with almost every application, I think we should.
You can hold this over to the 21st, if that's possible.
Well, what I'd like to do is, before I answer, we schedule a site visit, and with our indomitable secretary tells me the possible dates we have for it. The earliest we could do is June 17th. Anybody?
Five.
Oh, Jesus.
How'd you say that?
Jeez almighty. We're, you know, the only time we avoid any is Mother's Day. I don't know about Father's Day. You guys-
I don't have a problem with our meeting.
No, I don't either.
Do, are we obliged to have a site visit for this?
Well, I'm asking you, do you think we-
I don't, my personal opinion is that I trust the fire department more than my own opinion about the width of the road, since I've never driven a fire truck before. Maybe Jamie has an opinion about whether the road is wide enough, but I don't.
Anyone else? Dave, Peter? You think site visit's necessary?
Again, that's why I tried to provide some photographs, just so you can see it, because it's not a significant area of that roadway.
And the road's in use already.
I just have one comment. If we're doing a referral to the fire department, I just want to make sure that the fire department knows specifically that we're talking about access-
Very good point.
To this P1 property that doesn't open up, I mean, there's issues, as Ron stated, regarding-
That'll be described in the transmittal of the documents that are received.
Okay. So I'll take that as a no. Any agreement? Okay.
All right, so if we can get, hopefully, response from the county planning department and the fire department, it would be certainly helpful to have it on the 21st, get our approval on the 21st.
Well, the issue also of public hearing. Board-
You're not required to-
Not required, I understand that.
Right. Access approval doesn't require-
Okay.
Well, they can.
No, you can.
Yeah, but do we really feel it's necessary? Okay. Is that the census of the board? Okay. That's the new one on me.
You should declare it an unlisted action under SECR and declare yourselves the lead responsible agency.
Okay, motion to that effect?
I'll make a motion to declare it an unlisted action under SECR.
Second. Peter, you second?
Yes.
Oh, in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I'll make a motion to declare us the lead agency.
Second?
Second, aye.
Oh, in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Steve, any else?
Do you have to move to refer to the fire department?
Yes, thank you.
Well, I mean, it's up to you. It's kind of premature, but, I mean, it's been your practice, and I know there's been some issues about it, to, if you think, you know, it's relatively simple application, to direct Ron to have approval resolutions ready, since you're not holding a public hearing or anything like that, you might want to have those ready, unless it's too soon, Ron. I don't, you can-
No, thank you, Mr.-
So we should first-
We need a motion to direct-
Oh, okay.
Oh, okay.
Ron.
Well, yeah, if you get some from the fire department, you're not gonna adopt the resolutions.
No, 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 I'm just gonna make a motion to refer to the fire company first, before...
Oh, you didn't do that already? I'm sorry, I thought you had.
Sure we did.
Okay, my bad.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And direct Ron to prepare a resolution.
I'll make the motion.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Do we get them all?
Mm-hmm.
Thank you. Okay. J. Mark Jewelers. Uh, applicant is seeking amended site plan approval to construct a two-hundred-and-forty square foot addition for showroom space to the rear of the existing structure.
Good evening, Glenn Watson from Beatty and Watson, representing J. Mark Jewelers, Jim Matero, the proprietor, sitting in the back. You all know J. Mark Jewelers, it's been around since nineteen eighty-three in this location. It's about a one-point-seven acre piece of property, I think it's actually bigger than that, I just read that, and I think that may be incorrect. What we're looking to do is take this eighteen-hundred square-foot rectangular building, and bump out the sales area for two-hundred-and-forty feet, sixteen by fifteen rectangle, which will expand the sales area, just to, by way of, just a little bit of history. What we have here is a small artisan jewelry-making facility, and I may have said, in somewhere, I may have said factory, but it really isn't a factory, it's really a small artisan studio create jewelry, and, and a small part of, in the northern part of the building. The southern, I'd say, two-thirds of the building is, is dedicated to sales, they wanna expand that, make that two-hundred-and-forty square, two-hundred-and-forty square feet bigger. The building is, the addition, you can see here in pink, behind the main building, it's small, it's, will be hardly visible, it's very small, not, not much to do, we don't anticipate, we've re, we've recalculated the parking, we have sufficient parking. Mr. Gainer's memo, I saw that he was concerned about the number of employees, we don't anticipate that the number of employees will, will increase, but we'd be happy to state that on the plan. Mr. Gainer's memo also asked about the, the easement that's shown on the map, and he asked that we hand that up, I'm prepared to do that right now, but, just so you know, the easement was created by the planning board in order to have a shared, shared driveway with the neighbor, so... I think we have what qualifies as a, it's, it's actually an amended site plan, and we did provide, on other sheets of the plan, we did provide for erosion control, we have very little, very little change, very little activity, very little disturbance, we believe that we're operating under the terms and conditions of the original site plan approval, we'll continue to operate under that original site plan approval, we think that it'll be very small, inconspicuous, and hope you will too. Be happy to try to answer any questions, if you have any.
Ron, any comments?
Again, you've got a technical memorandum from my office, dated May fifteenth, just as described, it's a very small addition to the rear of the existing property, I think the board is very familiar with where it, where it is. Given the size, magnitude of the project, it represents a minor project, and that should be the first thing that you do at tonight's meeting, it's classified as minor. Relative to SEACRA, again, because of the very small magnitude of the addition, the SEACRA regulations actually specify very small projects, very small additions, as a type-two action, that, once the board so declares, it concludes your SEACRA responsibilities. It's, it's expected not to have any significant environmental impact, given the small magnitude of the project. So, I believe you, if you're so disposed, you could consider that a type-two action tonight, and conclude your SEACRA responsibilities. There's one referral that's required, do county planning, since it's along Route Nine, that has not yet been done, I'm gonna accomplish that if directed. And then, we have some planned, uh, comments for the applicant's consultant to respond to. So, if you can initially just classify the action as minor, direct the necessary referrals to be made, and the next significant issue would be to determine whether you wish to have a site inspection to evaluate the project.
Okay, thank you. Steve, anything?
The only, only thing I'd say, and I, I, the, the SEACRA regulations do say what Ron says, that they, they say, that, that buildings under, I forget, it's two-hundred-and-fifty, I think, square feet, are type-two actions, as long as they're not residential, they're commercial. But it's not real clear if that applies to standalone buildings, or that applies to additions to buildings, and if you declare it a type-two action, and somebody brings a lawsuit and says, you know, this, this was improper, or you violated SEACRA, you're gonna have a problem, whereas if you declared an unlisted action, and adopted a negative declaration, which I think will certainly be the case on this, then you're, you're covered, and the applicant is covered for it. So, look, I mean, if you declared a type-two like Ron suggests, I, you know, I, I think you'd be okay, but I'd suggest that the better course would be belt and suspenders, declared an unlisted action, and adopt a negative declaration.
Okay, members of the board, comment on it? Neil, Neil?
I'm just confused by one thing. Glenn suggested that it is, we're gonna call it a craft workshop, which therefore, this is H C, has an asterisk with it. The asterisk states that a minor project shall require minor project site plan review if the footprint of the addition exceeds a thousand square feet. So, this is two-fifty, which seems like an incredibly de minimis size of adding to a building. So, is there any category that's even less than a minor, that this even requi-, why this would not be by right, that they could just do this without us having to...
It's a commercial structure, commercial structure, it's always required a site plan.
Yeah, it's usually a residential requirement, site plan.
I'm with you, but I'm, I'm looking at this particular, and there's maybe a reason why Glenn's suggesting it's a craft workshop, is because, at least like a single-family dwelling, it has the same asterisk that does a single-family dwelling, which states only for those above a thousand square feet additions.
You'd also classify it as retail, since they do sales.
I'm not disputing that, I'm just saying...
I think Glenn was, I don't mean to speak for him, but I think he was identifying the fact that it should not be classified as a factory. So, certainly, if you consider retail, which is what they do, it would mandate site plan review, and there's never a harm to, to get the building department files clear on any updates to any site plan that's been approved by the board.
Okay, anyone else? Well, first, let's, motion to declare it a minor.
Make that motion.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And referrals to county planning and North Highlands Firehouse.
Don't move.
Again, do we need, can we do them as a group?
Yeah, sure.
County planning and fire.
Actually, you don't need to do them one at a time.
Okay.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Now, on the business about the type-two actions, should we follow our attorney's suggestion, sir?
I think we should follow our attorney's suggestion, and, 'cause we don't wanna set a precedent that is, you know...
Yeah, okay.
So, I'll make a motion to declare it an unlisted action under SEACRA.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. So, I guess we need to determine, do we want a site visit?
I don't think so.
I don't, I don't really either, so, so much for that. Okay, I go by it every day. Dave, I mean, you go visit it. Okay.
It's all right.
Is there anything else on this, Ron?
One last thing that you might wish to consider, again, being a minor project, it doesn't mandate a public hearing, it's a decision of the board whether you wish to conduct one.
May I speak to that for a moment?
Sure.
Section one-seventy-five, sixty-eight D, if the planning board finds that such proposed amendment is consistent with terms of any applicable special use approval, or if no special use permit is required, and does not yet not represent a substantial change in the urban site management shell, it shall grant the amendment without a hearing.
Fine with us. Just one less hearing. Sense of the board?
That's why he makes a big vote. You noticed, did you see that? That was very impressive.
Sense of the board, sense of the board, that we don't need to...
I don't think any of them can.
Okay.
Two-hundred-and-fifty square feet, I have two-forty, two-forty, sorry.
I think I had a shed bigger than that.
Kick on the hells.
So, I think we're done?
Well, can we ask, we can, all right, a resolution for approval at your next meeting, so we, we get the referrals back.
Okay, a motion to direct Ron to prepare the resolution for next month?
Don't move, next minute.
Uh, can we, okay, what is it?
The next meeting is the twenty-first.
June twenty-first, okay.
They'll never get the referrals by the, the county planning, no. They're, they're quick, but not that quick.
Well, then, by the July meeting?
Yeah, just put them on July.
Okay. You know somebody?
I'm pretty good, but I don't think I can push.
A motion to that effect, July, get a letter, a resolution from Ron by the July meeting? Anyone?
Shall we?
Second.
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Could, could have been, who were right by me?
We started at seven.
We're gonna do one more, and then, then take a break. James Copeland, old, started old business. Applicant is seeking a change in use from retail office space, the space is previous, previously an antique store, that is located in the H C zoning district, and the site visit was performed by six.
We had a site visit with Ron Gainer, and he issued recommendations, comments on the item, on the first item. My name's James Copeland, I'm with Hudson Design. The first item was, Ron had requested, uh, site access and parking in the extent of grading required, so we revised the site plan to show this. On site constraints, we indicated where the floodplain is, where the wetlands are. On-site utilities, we provided information about the tests on the septic system, and on this, on the site visit, we walked to see where the repair of the main septic system down by, near Clove Creek, was repaired. The cross-easements have been established by Beatty and Watson, and references on the site plan were given, the, all site disturbances have been shown, and the area of the high bank, where the, the new driveway will be, new ramp to the front of the building, will be cleaned up and stabilized. There was a request that, uh, new plantings be provided out in front of the building, that would discourage access off of Route Nine at the curve. Those improvements are noted as, as low vegetation, so as not to affect the sightlines. Exterior lighting, Mr. Gainer had called for dark sky guidelines to be upheld, and we accept that as a stipulation for any new lighting. We've shown the existing lights, where they, where they are on the site plan, and the buildings, the new, uh, building lights that would be attached to the building. Regarding the adjacent site intrusions, I just, just to let Ron know that we had no arrangements with Griffin. Apparently, he told the planning board that we had agreed that he could place his firewood on our site, that was, I have no agreement with him, but I notice they're, yeah, they're probably on our property as well.
Don't they have a structure on your property? When we went to see Griffin, there was a structure that belonged to them on your property?
I don't think it's a structure, but he produces so much firewood, it just kind of rolls over.
No, I don't mean it firewood, I thought there was...
No, the structure itself actually extended over the property line.
Yeah, I thought it was. Oh, is it a...
I don't know if that building is still there.
I think it was.
Right, so that's, that's gone, the foundation may, the slab may still be there, but there was a very slight intrusion in the, in the northeast corner.
I took care of that problem.
Across the line, right. Board had previously classified this as a minor project, I took an extended period, but the board finally made a site inspection, you've got a memorandum from my office, a few members of the board was able to attend, and Jamie was just reviewing the various technical things that were identified when the board members walked the site. Referrals were made to county planning and to North Highlands Fire Department, and both have responded. County planning has approved, the project is submitted, North Highland has offered no comments on the intended improvements to the site plan, so both of those referrals have been satisfied.
Is there anything else we need, then, Ron, to schedule a public hearing?
Again, being, being a minor project, it's, it's whether you wish to consider holding a public hearing, it's discretionary for minor projects.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
So, I'm sorry that I couldn't be at the site visit. In looking at the documents that you gave us originally, that had to do with the, the original approval for the antique store, and I believe I saw that the planning board had wanted to remove all access to Route Nine, and to put all the parking behind the building, and I'm just wondering, you know, 'cause it's, we're supposed to be thinking about that as part of our...
Yeah, that's, it was discussed at the site visit.
So, that was discussed.
The board, the board felt that low planting should be placed along the right-of-way, the corridor, to prevent any access into the property, except through the approved DOT access.
And will that, will that be, 'cause it says here, ground cover native species, so is that gonna screen the cars, or is that just gonna...
No, it's supposed to be low. There hasn't been, we haven't commented on the latest supplemental from the applicant that has addressed these things, but those things will be resolved, and, and the intent of the plantings will be to prevent access from the Route Nine corridor onto the property anywhere but at the DOT entrance.
Right, and, and, so, there was a, this is, is this considered, this is part, one of our scenic roads, it's in the scenic map, the scenic road overlay, correct?
No, I don't think it is.
No, it isn't. Route Nine is not.
I don't think it is.
But keeping with what you're saying, as, as Glenn will remember deeply from our conversations around Magazzino, quote, page one-sixty-five, page one-seventy-five, two oh, quote, "Except for retail and service businesses that require visibility, the visual impact of structures from public roads shall be minimized through the use of vegetative screening, topography, and colors that blend to the natural surroundings," and we spent a lot of time talking about both Magazzino and the G A S T, sorry?
E S P.
E S P, yes. ESP, yes. And the gas station that is across from, was the Garrison Cafe when we asked for screening as well. So I do think low vegetation is not, the spirit of this is to screen when we have the opportunity, when it's not retail. It's no longer going to be retail. That would be, I think, the spirit of what you're asking for.
That's it?
Yeah.
Okay.
Oh, well, no, I'm sorry. So the new parking in the back? The creek is really close. I don't know if, at the site visit, there was any concern about that?
It's just been acknowledged, there was a discussion with the conservation board. Conservation Board has identified that they do, the applicant does require a permit from that board. So that's a matter that has to be, has to be advanced, too.
Well, within honors.
Right, they're not, they're not doing significant work in the back, but, you know, for the most part, it's all existing.
So do we make a referral, or we made a referral already, or...
I can't recall if there was a formal referral or not, but I know, as I said, we've gotten electronic communications from the, from Max that just confirmed that a permit would be required, and the applicant's responsible to prosecute that application.
Have we had a chance to review it yet?
I haven't heard anything further since, that probably goes back to March.
Well, should we refer to them as well?
I think the referral's essentially been made.
Okay.
They've identified the need for permits for the applicant to prosecute that application.
Okay. Do we want to schedule a public hearing? Anyone?
Is a public hearing required?
Do we want it? Well, that's I'm asking. No, it's not required, but...
It's discretionary, they can, can choose to.
Well, we've rarely did an application tonight without a public hearing. We've rarely let a project like this go without some sort of discussion. Well, how's the board feel?
So I guess what I'll ask is, we've heard a number, I've heard a bunch of things about what you're going to do there. Like, somebody said you were going to have a brew pub, but that's, is that...
I've been asked to put a lot of things there, but I understand the limits of the retail office category. Yeah, I'd out brew pub, and there's too much water, too much septic. It's not a, that's not a feasible use.
Okay, well...
Because I think that that would be the, you know, depending on what kind of activities you're going to have going on there would, you know, affect our desire to have a public hearing.
Our intent? Our intent is, is retail office. So it would be, yeah, they're not food service, they're not, not industrial processing.
I mean, my, my personal preference is generally to have a public hearing, simply because that's what, that's our practice.
You really go without doing one?
Right.
Neil, Dennis, Neil?
I agree with that. I personally don't think it's necessary, but...
Neil?
Actually, you just piqued my interest, because when I read this document, it says a transition from retail to office space. And I was actually fine with not doing a public hearing for that, but if it's some category called retail office space, which I don't know what that category is, in other words, multi-use and multiple changes, then I am interested in hearing more about it. Because I don't, what category is a, is a retail office?
Well, again, retail and office are both permitted uses in the zone.
Understood. I'm just saying, it says here, from retail to office.
Right. Previously was retail, the antique store. And he's put in writing the desire to have both office and retail in that building. Office on the second floor, retail to remain on the first. We've asked him to identify that on the site plan to elaborate exactly what that is intended to be. But that's where the, if he just stayed with retail, he wouldn't have to come before the board.
Well, so what's the sense of the board? Neil?
I guess I'd say then it probably wouldn't be the worst thing, because if there's going to be material change in traffic, visiting, if there's, if there is an option to have, you know, some sort of restaurant-like environment with, I think there's just worth hearing people's opinions. If it was simply office space, which is actually even more limiting use from retail, then I would be...
Make a motion.
Public hearing.
You'll have a public hearing?
Well, I'll let you, sir, make that motion.
July meeting, yeah. Anybody from motion to...
I'll make a motion that we hold a public hearing.
Second?
Just a question. Retail, though, wouldn't mean food service.
That's why, your answer was, you've been asked, you're thinking about it, but you're probably, probably not, as opposed to, no, I'm not, I'm going to have office space. So that's why I'm asking the question.
I mean, I can answer pretty affirmatively. There's no food service.
The thing is, the thing is, I mean, to me, about this, is that, you know...
Unless there's some reason not to, it seems like it's, it's always good to invite, maybe nobody will show up, you know? But maybe somebody knows something that we don't know, because they've lived there for 40 years, or they've done business there for 40 years.
So I take that as a second?
Yeah, you can take that as a second. I guess I just sort of said that.
All in, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. July, yeah. You can't do it before that.
I just want to make sure. Thank you.
Thank you. Got to get to the point, Dave.
And threw it back at me. But I appreciate it, Dave.
I said we were going to take a five-minute break. I need to, I got to stretch the leg. I'm going to jump a little bit on the agenda. We have 1657 Route 9D Christopher Buck. We only need to approve the draft seeker and the resolution to approve, so let Ron address, address that briefly.
Hey, you've got resolutions that go back to the prior meeting. You should first adopt the, the negative seeker declaration if you're so disposed. They were after, you should consider the site plan approval. It comes with the standard conditions. We were still, for Buck, we were still waiting for Bunnell County Health approval. There were some technical issues that go back to a prior memo that have to be resolved. And let's see, the one, one caveat in this approval is that it does authorize the applicant to initiate construction of the barn that's proposed on the property before he formally gets site plan approval, because the intent of that is to have that in place to use for construction staging upon receipt of the approval. So that's been written in here, just for the boards, just for the board to be aware.
Any comments? Motion to draft seeker resolution and a resolution to approve, well, do one first. Draft seeker resolution?
To make a, a neg dac?
Yes.
To declare a neg dac? I'll make that motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And a resolution to approve? I'll make that resolution.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, get back on the... Garrison Property Holdings, 8892 Whippa Will Pond Road. Applicant is seeking major site plan approval for construction of new single-family residence, accessory cottage, resurfacing and improving the portion of the driveway, a portion of the driveway, and the installation of septic system. Additionally, three buildings will be raised, a cottage, a barn, and a garage. And the site visit was performed May 6th. Comments? We are here to schedule a public hearing, but Glenn?
I'm just going to point to this thing first, just to get a little business. Either way, you asked last month about the, about the conservation easements. There are two sets of conservation easements on the property. This larger one was originally conveyed to OSI, who in 2012 assigned it to Hudson Highlands Land Trust. So that's the green area. The yellow areas, outlined in yellow, those were conservation easements granted directly to Hudson Highlands Land Trust. The area that we're talking about for site plan approval is in the unencumbered portion of the property. And with that, I've made some copies of this map outlining those areas, and copies of the probably six or eight deeds that ended up... That ended up, you know, constituting the conservation easements the way they exist today. You had your site visit.
Have I got the wrong thing on?
You've got Buck and you've got...
I'm sorry.
You've got Hughes at the same time.
Why is the wrong board?
You can't put anything past us. Good going, Neil.
This is the right one. Sorry about that.
All of the proposed activity is, is in the middle of this, sort of in the middle of this unencumbered area that I just pointed out. There are three buildings being taken down. One actually is being rebuilt, a garage, and then a residential structure is being taken down, a small cottage and a barn, and it's going to be replaced by a slightly larger residential structure. There was a question with regard to the septic system, which I think we've answered to Mr. Gaynor's satisfaction. Had your site, site visit a couple of weeks ago, and we think we're ready for the public hearing.
Any comments, Ryan, or Ron?
Yes, as indicated, you have a memorandum to identify site walk issues. As I recall, the referral had previously been made to county planning, and the responses come back, approved or submitted. So that referral has been accomplished. The board did not yet make a referral to the conservation board. It was questioned whether steep slopes would be disturbed, and the applicant was going to evaluate whether the steep slopes identified in plan actually qualified under the steep-slope section of the zoning code as, as slopes that are designated. Has that been resolved?
Yes. Yeah, we measured it, it's the rectangular thing. We haven't, we haven't made new plans, but we'll...
All right, that has to be proved, or else the referral has to be made to the conservation board.
I, I, okay. We have that.
Okay. And then, as indicated, it's just a matter to schedule a public hearing.
Okay, so what referral, besides conservation, is, you said county planning has been done?
County planning has been done.
Okay.
And they've responded.
Okay. Motion to refer to conservation board?
Again, it may not be necessary.
Okay.
The plan is indicating that they're not disturbing steeps, they're classified steep slopes.
Motion to schedule a public hearing. July 19th meeting also. Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Okay, so what we got? Where we go?
Can I just ask a technical question?
Sure.
Before the, if we're going to refer to the conservation board, wouldn't we want to do that before the...
He says that it is needed, and he said he's going to submit the proof to Ron before, before the July meeting, certainly. I don't know when you're going to get that proof regarding the steep slopes. He said you'd, you'd send to Ron the...
I'll send it to Ron in the next couple of days. We'll, actually, we'll be making, we'll make a submission of revised plans anyway. We just, let's do on Thursday, so...
And worst-case scenario, things don't pan out, you just hold the public hearing open.
Next one, Alex Campbell for Cliffside, Cliffside Court and 28 Upland Drive. Applicant is seeking approval of access to the property with the intent to construct a new single-family residence. Make sure you use the mic. All right, just hold on, one of our members.
Thanks. I was here last meeting, April 19th, to seek approval of access, and the board directed Mr. Gaynor to reach out to the Continental Village Fire Department to opine on the adequacy of the road leading up to my property at Forcliff Side Court and 28 Upland Drive. The Continental Village Fire Department chief sent a letter back to Mr. Gaynor on May 10th and suggested four improvements for suitable and safe egress and ingress to my property. And they are widen the, the confluence of Cliffside and Upland Drive at the east side of Cliffside beginning. So imagine a Y at the bottom of the V. Widen that portion of the road. Widen the driveway to my proposed site plan. Straightforward enough. Number three, remove brush prior to the confluence of Cliffside and Upland Drive, so there could be a turnaround area for any emergency vehicles, which I'm happy to do. And the fourth, fix potholes and extend the paving from the confluence of Cliffside Court to Upland Drive, where there already exists pavement on Cliffside Court. It's about 100, 150 feet roughly. I sent a letter back to, I sent a letter back to Mr. Gaynor on May 14th to his attention, but to the town, and said that I'm happy to do all of those improvements with a caveat that, sorry, am I going to start over?
No.
Okay. I sent a letter back to Mr. Gaynor on May 14th, and I said I'm happy to do all of those improvements with a caveat that I propose doing the potholes and pavement after construction with a bond that I'd give to you guys to make sure that the money's there. Primarily because if, you know, a pothole gets bigger, I want to make sure it's up to the right, it's fixed the right way and not damaged more. And, yeah, I'm happy to do what the fire department has asked, and hope that that is suitable for the planning board for approval of access.
You say these things have been accomplished?
I'm willing to do them.
You're willing to do it, okay. Oh, yeah, okay. Any comment on this, Ron?
Well, again, you've got comments from the fire department. The applicant has committed in writing to accomplishing those. This, this relates to a request for access approval. There's no requirement for a public hearing, and there's no requirement for site plan review. So it's merely just access. So again, you can determine whether you wish to have a public hearing or not. But the, if the, whenever the board is so disposed, we would just tie up those conditions of the fire department in any resolution of access approval when you're prepared to make that action.
Okay. How's the board, how's the board feel about the public hearing? Any sense of the board? As for the access?
This is, again, close to the intersection with another road, right? This is, again, close to the intersection with another road, so it's not like much further down the road.
Well, no, it's, it's pretty far down Upland, I would say.
Far down Upland.
Could be more than 1,000 feet, could be a quarter of a mile, maybe.
And if I remember Upland, I don't go there very often. It's a tough road.
It's a challenge, but again, that's the reason we had the fire department drive the road.
Yeah, right.
And identify, what they identify is necessary improvements for safe and appropriate access.
So the fire department thinks they can get up Upland?
Yeah, they know they can.
Okay.
And they're just identifying areas that they think should be addressed, so, you know, just remedial work. Just brush clearing, a little bit of pothole work, some paving at the intersection to just widen the throat of the intersection, so they can easily make turns.
And those are things I'm happy to do primarily for, you know, the emergency vehicles, but also for my neighbors, you know, for me, like, those are things that anybody would want to do anyway, I think, so more than happy to do those. So more than happy to do those things.
So Ron, how do we ensure that these things are done?
Again, it's just a matter of identifying them as conditions of approval, that that approval then goes back to the building department, and they'll have to be addressed when he prosecutes any building permit application.
So I don't get the sense that the board's interested in a public hearing? We just direct you to draw up an approval, resolution?
If you wish, sure.
Last time the escrow hadn't been posted, has the escrow been posted?
I'll take however you want me to post it. I can write you a check tonight, I can do whatever you want.
I get the cash?
Cash? I don't know. It's been two and a half years, I'm willing to do anything.
No, we want to expedite as much as possible.
All right, just make that a condition of approval of the escrow. I think it's a standard condition anyway, isn't it? Yeah, so, all right.
Okay. And motion to effect?
I'll make the motion...
To direct Ron?
To direct Ron to prepare a memo, a resolution of approval conditioned upon the escrow fees being paid.
Second?
Compliance directed by the fire department.
Right. Directed by the Continental Village Fire Department.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you.
Thank you, guys.
I got to stop these little jokes, you know? Barbara Peck Eiler, Lake Celeste Drive, Old Albany Post Road. Proposed construction of new single-family residence and driveway with detached garage. Applicant is seeking approval of access. Oh, boy. Yeah. Sir.
How are you? So I'm closer than this, okay? Am I loud and clear? So I think since the last hearing, I think that was before we began the legal review of right of access, which I believe was completed satisfactorily, the recommendation of Mr. Gabba, and subsequently also have had the fire department review. And I believe you should be in possession of a letter composed by me, by the way, Ms. Eiler is there seated, and indicating our intent to comply in full with the recommendations of the fire department. And today, unfortunately, so late, but updated plan set was released by Jim Clearwater of MJS Engineering out of Goshen, which locates some of the specific concerns of the fire department. I think specific engineering for the remediation, I assume, would be supervised by the building department. I mean, we didn't go to show, like, exactly how we would modify some of the stonework, but all of it can be modified without affecting anybody's direct property or yards or anything like that. It's all roadside. And the most egregious circumstance of the turns that were affected by the fire department are stone walls, basically rubble piles six feet wide. So it seems quite possible to rebuild that wall, rather easy to rebuild it, so it was not six feet wide, and thereby have the road would be consistently over 12 feet throughout. They talked about the turnaround and clearing a couple of trees out of the turnaround, which also would be relatively easy to do, there's plenty of working space there, we'd just take a few trees out. And, you know, I think the idea was to pave, not, I mean, you know, like, item four, that island, but I think we could do something more attractive that would still allow a fire truck to turn around. You know, some kind of hard pack with grass or something like that that would not detract from the, you know, turn it into looking like a parking lot, the circle there. But in terms of the spirit of compliance, we'd be more than happy to comply. I also found out just today that we received health department approval, so that's all done on this. I guess after all this, what we're hoping is that this would get moved over to the building department, because it seems that... I mean, it was certainly understandable that all the diligence was done on this, but at this point, it seems like it's mostly engineering questions more than planning questions. But I don't know what the thoughts of the board are on the Eiler lot at this stage.
Ron, you want to comment something?
Yep, again, this is the third applicant you've dealt with tonight that is seeking access approval from this board. And there's been a variety of questions raised by the board. Initially, it was questioned whether I had legal right of access to Lake Celeste Drive. Mr. Gabba's office has responded that they in fact do. We've made the referral to the Continental Village Fire Department, who has responded and identified specific improvements that they felt necessary in order to assure emergency vehicle access to the property. As you heard tonight, the applicant's committing to address those issues. So again, it's a matter for the board to determine if there's any other outstanding issues you have. If you're so disposed, again, you might consider seeking a resolution to grant that access approval conditioned on the satisfaction of the fire department, issues and any other outstanding technical concerns such as confirmation that the health department has approved the sanitary system and the like.
Well, you have more resolutions for the upcoming meeting, I would think, because their conditions really should be spelled out.
Yep, right.
Neil?
I'm looking at the picture, I assume you're Mr. Feeling?
I'm Mr. Fearing, yeah.
Fearing, excuse me. So I'm looking at the picture Mr. Fearing shared of this, you described as a wide stone wall, for the term we used, but this very, this low and wide and intricate-looking stone wall, which is owned by whom? Do we know who owns this stone wall?
Well, it extends to two lots. I don't know...
No, this is Peck Eiler.
No, no, this is on the road, but it's within the right-of-way.
Let me finish my questions and comments, which is, there's a stone wall here owned by other parties that looks to be of some age, doesn't look like it was built two weeks ago. So I get a little concerned about destroying, which is what is being suggested here, officially remove the excess stone and reduce the stone wall width, that this is someone else's property that has been there for some particularly, I don't know, 20, 40, 50, 80, who knows how many years, but a material period of time. And so I'm sort of struggling with a property rights issue between this woman's right to access her property and the owner's right to have a thing that has been there for some period of time. And I don't know where that goes. I don't know how the... I know you mentioned here you'd love to have the support of the HOA and the community. I suspect if the owners of said walls were asked and they said yes, I'd have no problem. But if they were deeply disturbed by their wall being destroyed, and it was their wall, I think, I don't know how to adjudicate that.
Just on that... On what you're talking about, what about the... If this road is supposed to be... Or the idea is it's supposed to be widened, which means you'd have to take this, these, this part of the rocks out and stuff like that. What... I mean, are there not people above this road who, you know, would have a safer situation? You're not the last house here.
There are nine houses beyond that wall. And I brought, I've got all the photos, I can, I don't have a way to project them, but I do have, you can sort of get a sense of it. But the wall is outside of a fence line. So it may, and it is within a right-of-way. You know, it's an established right-of-way. I believe that the established right-of-way through there is 50 feet, and it's well within that right-of-way, as shown. That's why we had the plans, we were trying to make sure that we understood its location relative to other properties. So whenever the road was... The wall does not look to me historic. I mean, it probably is old. Well, I mean, if it was of... It doesn't appear by its construction to be historic. It's basically, you know, it's a pile of rocks. Part of it is natural. There's some ledge projection there.
Excuse me, but isn't there something in the zoning code about walls? Yeah, okay. I mean, if you take them down, you have to rebuild them somewhere else, nearby or on the same property or something?
Conservation of stone walls and the like. I don't think this particular stone wall would fall under that, for one thing. But to cut to the chase on this, the fire department has recommended that certain measures be undertaken so that there be safe and suitable access for emergency vehicles. The appropriate thing for this board to do in regard to an ODA road application is to impose, unless you disagree with them, of course, I mean, Ron may see things differently or something, I don't know. But to impose those things to be done as conditions on the approval. Now, it may be, as Neil points out, that he's got a problem with his neighbors, and they come in and say, "It's on my fence, you can't do my stone wall, you can't do this," or "It's been there for however many years, we've extinguished the easement over that portion." I mean, those are his problems. I don't mean to be callous about it, but they are. And if you can't meet the conditions that this board imposes on your ODA road, you're going to have to come back with another plan and say, "Modify my ODA road approval." But this board wouldn't sit here and say, "Well, gee, I'm concerned about that stone wall, I'm concerned about your ability to brush, or to fill the road, or to widen it," or whatever it might be. That's what the fire department says needs to be done. And again, unless Ron sees things differently, that's what needs to be done for them to get an ODA approval. And that's as far as this board goes. We don't get into enforcement of private easements or stone wall rights or anything like that.
To extend that thought, though... Well, just to protect the board's interest, we did seek to have the applicant provide a plan of the mapped right-of-way and identify where within that right-of-way the stone walls existed. And they were only presented tonight, so they haven't been subject to any review, but it appears that they're, the applicant's representing that they're within the defined right-of-way. They're not on private property. So that'll be subject to more detailed review. But we've attempted to protect your interest to at least understand whether it's understood to be within an existing map right-of-way or not.
My only... Thank, this is very helpful, Steve, thank you. I just want to make sure that what we, if we do state that they must have urgency, access of a certain width, that we are not then tacitly suggesting that therefore Ms. Peck Eiler has the right to then take someone else's wall that may not be her property. I just want, I want to make sure that's not where even implicitly suggesting.
No, not at all. We run into this all the time with easements. In fact, we had one a while ago regarding an easement with a fence built across it or something. I forget how many years it was, but... But... Right. The rule is that this board grants site plan approval, subdivision approval, special permits like this. And in doing so, it neither enforces nor invalidates private rights like easements or existing location of structures or stone walls or buildings or anything else. You grant an approval, it's up to the applicant to comply with the terms thereof. You can't extinguish an easement or enforce private rights of parties other than the property owner.
Isn't that essentially the case we had with a woodwork, a wood place next to a Copeland's property?
Yeah, that would be an example.
We didn't deal, yeah. That didn't really come into the consideration.
Right, the structure was over the line. It just wasn't our problem, they had to move it to comply with.
Well, we can go to one of two ways. We can schedule a public hearing, or we can ask Ron to produce a resolution of approval. Please, the board want to go?
My opinion is, given the amount of commentary we've received correspondence, which is relatively heavy, I mean, not Hudson Highlands reserve level, but more than our average, given the road and the tightness of that community and the vocal nature of the response, I think a public hearing would be in our best interest.
Second to that? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. For July 19th, how many is that?
Settle in.
You really... I guess.
I don't know, how many is that? Is it four? Feels like it. Yeah, that's right. We may.
That may not be a feasible evening.
Yeah, I'm thinking, I'm thinking that too.
Are we doing an August meeting?
The workshop's on the 21st.
If we have stuff to do, yeah.
Then we may need, I mean, you're...
Well, then let's put it to August. Yeah, what's the August date?
June is the sculpting, and that's the workshop.
August 16th, okay.
We're not skipping August anymore?
You know, it's really... Well, you know, August is one thing, December Christmas thing is another. Okay. Do we take a vote on that? Do we vote on that?
You did.
Okay. So you've scheduled for a public hearing for August 16th?
Yeah, I don't know that I'll be able to attend that.
17th? 16th? Okay.
Don't know what I'm saying, I could do July.
No, you can't. No, we got too, it's too much of a load. Plus we have a... Best we can do. We were loaded up tonight, I mean, I was lucky, I'm thinking... It's 9:31, I wasn't about to start anything at this point, so you made it just under the wire.
All right, let's see how we do.
Okay. Anything else before we adjourn? Steve? Ron? Motion to adjourn? Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.